Everybody to the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Cordova Recreation Park District on March 19th, 2025.
All right, members of the public can view the meeting live on YouTube and the link is posted on the agenda. Members of the public are hereby notified that meetings of the Board of Directors are recorded and requests for video recordings may be made to the clerk of the board. If a member of the public wishes to make a general public comment or comment on a certain agenda item, please submit a blue speaker card to the clerk of the board and speaker cards are available on that back table there. And at this time, I'd like to welcome up Cassandra Markham, Director of Operations for the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce. And after the pledge, General Manager Patrick Larkin will say a few words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, so Mark is here.
Okay. So here is our introduction. This is Cassandra Markham is the Director of Operations for the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce. Driven by her desire to empower others, she is dedicated to creating opportunities for businesses to invest in their prosperity. Cassandra actively engages in initiatives to promote economic growth and development, leveraging her strategic mindset and strong organizational skills to drive positive change. We really enjoy working with Cassandra and thank her for her, thank her and the Chamber of Commerce for their service to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So we can take roll call now?
Standing action item.
Standing action item.
All right. So this is the portion of the meeting where we deal with any requests to join remotely through AB 2449. We received no requests under the emergency cause provisions. Initially, Secretary Mattis was going to participate remotely under the just cause provisions. However, he is joining us in person this evening, so we can list this item as no action taken.
Okay. Now we can do the call to order.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Mattis?
Here.
Vice Chair Langen?
Here.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Perfect.
Aye. I meant roll call, not call to order. Now we're, uh, B, comments for the public. Do you read that again?
Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, we have received no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there are no public comments.
Great. Well, that brings us to C, our consent calendar.
Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have four items for your consideration. I would like to pull item C4, so Director Jill Nuns can speak to the International Women's Day resolution and we can take a brief pause for photos. And again, at this time, we have received no speaker cards. However, if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there are no public comments.
Would any of the board, uh, board directors like to pull any of the items?
Uh, C3, please.
C3? Okay. Can I get a motion on one and two?
Chair Sloan, I'll make the motion that we approve as consent calendars, items C1 and C2.
A motion by Director Yearwood?
Second.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote?
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Discuss, pull item three now?
C3.
It's too creepy.
All right. So this one, I just want to pull, I talked to Patrick today, but more of just kind of get board members' ideas or thoughts on this. You know, for the amount of money that we spend to print this thing, I'm just wondering, now, obviously, it's too late. We're obviously gonna, we're gonna go with this. But within the next two years is to explore options of moving this thing full digital, not just the catalog, but also the system of how people sign up for our programs, how they pay for the programs to make it much more easier and more interactive to use, to kind of put some more time and some investment on that part. Because if we're looking at this thing, just the books alone for two years, almost $132,000, with tax is another $11,500, and then shipping, another 40 grand over two years. So we're looking at $183,411. Is that correct? Patrick?
So I'm gonna refer it over to Shelby, who's the one who is facilitating this contract. And she'll give you a little bit of history on why we're proceeding this way as it relates to some surveys that we had done previously. So I'll just turn it over to Shelby to...
Yeah, so in regards to the Digital Recreation Guide, a couple of years ago, we did a survey that went out to our community on whether they would prefer the printed guide or a virtual guide. Cause during COVID, we did do a virtual guide for a little bit, because everything was changing so quickly. And there was an overwhelmingly positive response to go back to the printed guide. That's really what our community members want. It also is a little more inclusive, because it's getting directly mailed to every resident. So we're also ensuring that every single person in our district is receiving our materials and seeing what programs and services we can offer.
Okay, but that, that 183,000, that's about plus or minus?
Um, so the contract amount, let me see here.
Cause it says in the resolution that it's 100, it can't exceed $131,900, not including tax. So at eight, seven, five with, with Rancho, that's, you know, 11 and a half thousand dollars. And then another 10 grand to mail each one times four, so that's another $40,000.
Yeah, so that would be a good estimate for the total cost.
And then so obviously, in two years, we're probably looking at 25%, maybe more of a cost increase across the board with everything else, with materials, time, and shipping. So just, within the next two years, can just the district?
And we can do another survey to see what the community members are feeling, if they think it's time that maybe we do move to a digital.
And see what other, what other agencies, what other platforms that are out there that are much more easier, much more interactive for the community to use to make it more worthwhile to move to. So that way, we have two years to kind of explore that option and take a look at that.
Yeah, we can look into that.
I know that most, uh, most people have a smartphone. And you can put your smartphone on a QR code and pick up this whole catalog, I think.
Well, I mean, we can still mail out like a half sheet card, double sided.
Something, right, that has a QR code that exists the full digital.
Stuff, you know, to advertise it on there.
So we will definitely look into doing some surveying and some data collection to find out what is the most preferred method of receiving the information. And then we can report back within the next two years for us to move in a different direction if that's what the community is.
Yeah, cause I mean, I'll, I'll say like my wife was very happy. She went through it. She tore out pages. She signed up, you know, kids, so.
So keep it, you're saying?
No, I was just, I'm just looking at it, you know, for the cost, because I mean, there's a lot of things that can go, $200,000 can go towards.
Yeah, there have been some benchmarks we did, and some agencies did move towards a digital-only format. And they ended up going back to a printed, because they were realizing their revenue was tanking, because they're not being reminded for like a magazine on your counter or coffee table or whatever. They have to be kind of directed and reminded. And not everyone is always looking at our website or social media.
Oh, I know. And there's other avenues too. There's other advertisements that can, that you can facilitate to kind of, you know, take some of that money and put it towards in there.
Yeah, we'll definitely do some surveying and make sure we're making the best efforts forward to make sure that as many people as possible can access that.
All right, thank you.
Refrigerator magnets.
Brian, do you have some?
So the other thing is, a lot of communities aren't like ours when it comes to this magazine due to the fact that they're not continuously growing. We still have another 100,000 people expected. And right now, I know Visit Rancho Cordova makes sure that this is in everything, so somebody who's buying a brand new home knows that we exist and we're not, you know, a part of another agency or something like that. So they're seen right off the bat that we exist and who we are right off, you know. So it's, even if we were just cut back to that, maybe, but I don't see getting rid of it completely, in my personal opinion. There's still uses for it.
We could do a pamphlet. Condense pamphlet.
Well, we have condensed quite a bit, and we only send it out twice a year now, where we used to send it out four times a year. We used to send it out by season.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So we have scaled back quite a bit.
Oh, 50% if I could do my math right.
I think the price of printing has gone way up. Price of printing goods, paper, ink?
Oh, yeah, really, yeah. During COVID with paper, we had to change all of our stock and paper and everything before we used and reconfigure a printer.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. C4?
Uh, we'll need a motion and second for this one.
I move that we approve C3 authorization, authorize the general board manager to execute to your contract with the print project manager for, for a not to exceed amount of $32,975 per guide for printing, mailing, and design of the biannual recreational guide.
I have a motion by Secretary Mattis?
Second.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote?
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Pull item C4.
C4, and I'll turn it over to Director of Parks and Recreation Jill Nuns.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sloan.
Thank you.
And members of the board. Happy Wednesday. All right, tonight, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 24/25-23, recognizing March 8th as International Women's Day. Little background, so International Women's Day was officially recognized by the United Nations in 1977. I was five. The day traces its roots to labor movements in North America and Europe with the first National Women's Day observed in the United States in 1909. Then in 1910, an international conference of working women in Copenhagen proposed a global day to advocate for women's rights. And by 1911, the first official International Women's Day was celebrated in several countries. So over the decades, International Women's Day has grown into a worldwide movement, recognizing the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, while also serving as a call to action for gender equity. So the Cordova Recreation and Parks District's vision is to empower and engage community pride by being safe, responsive, accessible, innovative, and sustainable. As an agency, we define accessible as developing an inclusive environment to cultivate participation and interaction. Adoption of this resolution not only supports our district's vision, but also demonstrates the community our commitment to the continuing to develop an inclusive environment. So tonight, the Cordova Recreation and Park District will join other agencies across the globe in recognizing International Women's Day and reaffirming our commitment to gender equity and inclusion. By adopting this resolution, we honor the contributions of women in our community and within our organization. So moving forward, this recognition will be an annual part of our efforts, including social media posts and our campaign each year on March 8th to highlight the achievements of women at our, in our agency. This ensures that our commitment to celebrating and supporting women remains an ongoing and integral part of our organization's practice. So before I read the resolution, I'd like to invite up all the women in the organization that are here tonight at the board meeting to come join me at the podium, please.
Come on.
Cassandra, you tend to?
Shelby, you gonna go up there?
Yeah, she's gonna turn to the...
I will in a moment, but I'm gonna take a picture of that, too.
Good way not to be in the picture.
All right. So this resolution recognizes the importance of honoring the achievements and contributions of women throughout history, while also advocating for gender equity and inclusivity in our community. Whereas International Women's Day, celebrated annually on March 8th, is a global day recognizing the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, while also serving as a call to action for gender equality. And whereas the Cordova Recreation and Park District acknowledges the invaluable contributions of women in our community, including their leadership in government, public service, and recreation, and their dedication to shaping a more inclusive and equitable society. Whereas the Cordova Recreation and Park District is committed to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of its work, ensuring that women have equal opportunities to participate, lead, and succeed within our programs, services, and community initiatives. Whereas International Women's Day serves as a reminder that gender equity benefits everyone, strengthening communities and creating just a prosperous, creating a more just and prosperous future for all. Whereas the Board of Directors of Cordova Recreation and Park District hereby recognizes and celebrates March 8th as International Women's Day, encourages our community to reflect on the achievements of women, past and present, and reaffirms its commitment to fostering an inclusive environment where all individuals are empowered to reach their full potential. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors that March 8th is recognized as International Women's Day in the Cordova Recreation and Park District. I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude and respect for these incredible women and all of the women in our organization. Your dedication, talent, and hard work are truly inspiring and play a vital role in our success. Thank you for unwavering commitment, your innovative ideas, and the positive energy you bring to the workplace every day. You are not just colleagues, but role models and trailblazers for who make a difference in everything we do. Today, we honor and celebrate you. Your contributions are invaluable, and we are proud to have such an amazing, we have, I am proud to have such amazing women as part of our team. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Let's do a picture maybe in front of the, do I wanna have maybe the board up here? For the background?
Should we vote on it first?
Yeah.
Or we can go down?
Actually make it official before we?
Okay, we, we should, we probably should vote. But since everyone wants to hang out at the dais, we'll pull with that too.
Chair Sloan, I, I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 24/25-23, recognizing March 8th as International Women's Day.
A motion by Director Danzel?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote?
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Okay.
Did you need to see if there was public comment?
No, sure to have.
Oh, we did at the beginning.
Oh, you did? Okay, good. Okay, photo op.
Well, they need us in it.
I would've wanted different truth, but we lost picture.
Probably gonna have to swish, yeah.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay. Awesome.
Thank you all.
Do you wanna do a photo with the board as well?
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah.
Shall we not now? We're not having any fun with Shelby.
I just wanna tell you guys, tonight is the CPRS Conference Social, and we have staff that are here and not at the social. So that's pretty amazing.
Because of you, because of this resolution.
Okay. Oh, good.
Can you see this?
We'll just be more the floating head.
The floating head.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right.
Awesome.
Thank you, board. Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's great.
Can we do a three, two, one, please?
She's the first person in this.
I am.
Well, I know that's all.
Okay. Head to the social. There could be a day for International Dog Day.
There is probably an International Dog Day.
That probably is all that stuff. Next time, next year.
Okay.
Where's everybody going?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for that wonderful, thanks, Jill. That was nicely, nicely said. That brings us to item D, presentations, which we have none. Now we get to our E, our committee reports.
Item E1, standing committee, district policies on March 3rd, 2025. Langen and Yearwood. And at this time, we've received no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comment.
Okay, you guys gonna talk about this?
Sir, would you like to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. I mean, I don't know how much we really wanna talk about it. That's the next item, all these wonderful things we discussed. We did, we did a, did have a nice meeting on the, what was the date again? The third? Where we, we discussed some things that need to be added in because of law, some things that needed to be adjusted, because things were, you know, numbers have changed over the year in the world of finance, and we're gonna discuss some issue, not issues, some new language for Planning Department. And we're also gonna talk about our favorite topic around here, naming parks. So, like I said, I don't think we need to talk too much about it, because we're gonna talk about all of them here shortly. So that's all I've got to say about that.
Yeah, I'd like to say it was a, it was a great meeting. And I think it's awesome. I've been on this committee for a few years, and it's been awesome to just see how every year, there's, there's new stuff, and we're on top of it. And so I know that there are different organizations out there that aren't as much. And so it is really cool to be part of a CRPD who is on top of it. And so, good job. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you. That brings us to F, public hearings, which we have none. We're talking, now we're at our regular calendar. Item G?
Item G1, adopt amendments to the Personnel Policies Employee Handbook for the Cordova Recreation and Park District. At this time, we've received no speaker cards. However, if there's anyone who'd like to make a comment? And seeing none, there will be no public comments. So I'll turn it over to Human Resource Manager Andrea White.
Thank you, Chair Sloan and Board of Directors. Tonight, I'm bringing forth five policy amendments. Of course, every year, several policy amendments are driven by new laws, and three of these are driven by new laws, and a couple are just cleanup items, items that need to be amended to make our workflow even better than it already is. Historical information is that we amended the full policy manual several years ago. We kind of had a committee, we wrote it together, had buy-in from every department with a legal review. And since that time, we've been updating it every single year. So, starting with the first one, we're gonna start with number one, which is 1.3 Equal Employment Practices Dress Code and Grooming Standards. I'd like to let you know that there is additional language that's required, and that's from the Crown Act, which is creating a respectful and open world for natural hair. It's a part of Assembly Bill 1815, and that means that we just have to expand the definition of natural hairstyles that are protected in the workplace in California. So we have amended our protected class with that new language. And I also want to let you know that our legal counsel has advised us to update some language of the protected classes in our manual with a couple of other items, so we have amended those as well. So anywhere in our personnel policies where we talked about, we talk about what employees and the protected classes are, it's gonna be amended in every single section in our manual, from employment to, you know, the definition to the very end. So this is a legal requirement to make sure that we're including that language as directed by that Assembly Bill. The second item is holiday and alternative work schedules, vacation leave. This is something that we would like to amend to help us be streamline our process. Right now, someone who's on probation, which for full-time employees is six months, full and part-time employees, but full-time employees who are issued vacation leave technically aren't typically using vacation during their probationary period. We will allow it with the general manager's approval. And there's a couple times where that comes up, like someone we hire, they're like, oh, I have a little vacation planned, you know, four months from now. I have a cruise I have already paid for. Something like that, we might approve that, depending on how long it is and how much impact there is. Also, if we, somebody takes a holiday, our holidays are eight hours, but someone might be working a nine, eight, 80 schedule, and so they'll use a vacation hour for, to make up the difference, so they don't have to work an extra hour that week. We would like to change that from approval from the general manager to the department head, just so we can, they're the ones who know the person's schedule. They're the ones who know how much time they have available. We never give out vacation unless they've already earned it. Someone takes an excessive period of time off, then we may adjust that probationary period to make up the difference for that. So that is to streamline a process. The third item is pregnancy, disability leave, and a new reasonable accommodation for pregnant workers. So this is a new federal law, and it's called the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. And it's a federal law that mandates that we accommodate pregnant workers. Now, of course, we have pregnancy, disability leave. But this actually allows us to accommodate a pregnant employee, maybe provide them more restroom breaks, maybe have them, you know, whatever a person might need, so that they, if they choose to, wanna work a little bit longer and not have to go out on that leave. This protects those rights to do that. And, you know, the employer, the employer can't force an employee to go out on an accommodation, nor would we want to. We're not the person's doctor. But this gives us the ability to accommodate them and go through that process during their pregnancy. The fourth item is pay. That is Section 6.2.10 in our policy manual. And this is requiring that employees, if they wanna take time off, they use the accrued balances they have available, instead of just opting for unpaid time. A lot of employees can save time for a vacation or a leave of absence or whatnot, but usually that means that they might use vacation instead of sick leave or something of that nature. But this requires that they can't take endless unpaid time. They'd have to use their accrued balances to continue with the payroll process. And the last one is a new law, that's Assembly Bill 2499. It amends the California Fair Employment and Housing Act for protections for victims of qualifying act, victims of a qualifying act of violence, QAV. You might see that acronym a little bit more coming up. And this just expands what is currently a law that allows us to help out or accommodate somebody who is a victim of violence. It also helps out employees whose family members are victim of a violence. And it kind of has some definitions that states what is covered, when are they covered, the person doesn't have to be arrested for them to be covered. So it kind of spells out exactly how we can help an employee. We already allowed employees to use sick leave for these purposes, but this just kind of sets it in stone with the brand-new law that's effective in 2025. Always note that anytime a law changes, we always defer to the law before the policy's actually approved. The law always trumps our policy, but it's good to update it so it matches what's required. Any questions?
Anybody from the board have any questions? No?
No.
Okay. You're going to vote on this?
I move the Board of Directors adopt the proposed amendments to the Personnel Policies Handbook Employee Handbook.
A motion by Secretary Mattis. Second. Second by Vice Chair Langen. Will call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Okay. This is G2.
Item G2, Adopt Amendments to the Financial Policies for the Cordova Recreation and Park District. At this time, we've received no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to CFO Matt Godell.
All right. Good evening, Chair Sloan and Board Members. Tonight, I'm bringing in two amendments to the financial policies. The first is an update and a recommendation to our procurement and signatory authority limits policy. Previously, the district adopted CUPCA, which is the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, and this allows us to increase the formal bidding requirement thresholds. On January 1, 2025, CUPCA adjusted that amount from $200,000 to $220,000, meaning any contract or agreement that is over that amount must go through the formal bidding RFP process, request for proposals, and of course, is managed through the board meeting process and your approval. Any agreements under $75,000, which was formerly $60,000, can be negotiated through a purchase order. And so that means in between $75,000 and $220,000, you can do either one. You could do either the formal bidding process or the negotiation of contract by purchase order. And the reason why you have flexibility is if you get a good price, you can go for it and have it the efficiency of timing, or if you feel like you need for competition and get competitive bids, you can go out for an RFP even if it's under $220,000. Staffs also recommending that the signature limits mirror CUPCA, meaning that anything that's over $220,000 will automatically come to the board. Anything below that to $75,000 requires the general manager approval. Below $75,000, the executive and leadership teams will approve, and that includes all management, department heads, and superintendents. And anything below and up to $10,000 is designated to staff that has specific purchasing responsibilities. And it can be anything from like rec supplies, booking hotel, airline reservations, to conferences, uniforms, customer trip excursions, et cetera. So it's more about the purchasing responsibility task versus just putting the amount to a job title. Overall, this will provide benefits of projects that are less than $220,000 to reduce number of formal bids. It'll accelerate contracting. It'll reduce the time and effort and administration, and it'll expedite the services and the projects' delivery to the community. This will be reviewed by the policy committee each time that CUPCA adjusts that amount, and of course, will be brought forward to the board for the final policy amendment approval. So that's the first one. The second one is a new policy based on the Government Accounting Standards Board, the Statement Number 96. This policy is for measuring and reporting subscription-based information technology arrangements, or SPITAs. What is a SPITA? For example, if we had a cloud accounting software-based application and we paid $1,000 a month for it, say we had a three-year agreement for $36,000, what I typically do now, I would just expense that $1,000, and you see it on the profit and loss district-wide financial statement. What this policy and statement states is that we need to have it on the books. So we need to show that $36,000 as a liability, a future liability, on our balance sheet. Just kind of like how we treat debt, our loans, our office lease, we just have to add it and show that as a liability. And that's typically that one. So both will take effect immediately, and again, will be reviewed as necessary. That's my presentation.
Any questions from the board? No? Nobody? No one? I have a question. You might have said it, but I just didn't hear. Informal compared to formal bidding? What is it? Formal bidding is what? You get three different bids and...
No. You take... Formal is when you have to do a request for proposal, and so you put it out to the public so people can put in their proposals or bids and go through the whole entire process and contract that way with the least responsible bidder. Informal is when we could just go out and get quotes, negotiate with the contractor directly, and just create a purchase order and have it done immediately.
We could... Someone could basically pick someone they know, right?
Well, we still have processes and protections in place that we try to follow that, no, you're not supposed to do that. You're supposed to still get quotes and get the best.
I know. I mean...
Anybody involved in this has gone through the three-hour ethics training?
Yes.
Yeah. We have responsible purchase people.
It could be someone that we don't know is related to someone who we don't know is related to someone else. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, that would be an ethical violation that would be addressed.
You can still have that in RFPs, too.
True. True.
Okay. Well, I'm ready to take a motion for this one.
I'll move the Board of Directors adopt the proposed amendments to the financial policies.
A motion by Director Yearwood?
Second.
Second by Director Danzel. Will call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you. Brings us to G3.
All right. Item G3, Adopt New Policies and Amendments to Park Planning and Development Policies for the Cordova Recreation and Park District. At this time, we receive no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to Park Planning and Development Manager Laura Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Sloan and members of the board. So Park Planning has determined the need to amend one policy and add three new policies to help clarify the district's land acquisition definitions and easements. We recommend amending 1.5 Land Acquisition to clarify that CRPD accepts land that qualifies for Quimby Parkland credit and may also accept land that does not qualify for Quimby Parkland credit. This clarification is needed to help eliminate false assumptions that can be made by developers, staff members, and other agencies that all land accepted by CRPD qualifies for Parkland Quimby credit when this is not the case. For example, CRPD may agree to accept within a park parcel a steeply sloped portion of that parcel that cannot be used for recreational purposes. So we would accept the entire parcel, but they wouldn't get Parkland... Quimby Parkland credit for the entire parcel because it's not all usable. We also felt that it was important to list easements in Policy 1.5 as a form of acquisition because CRPD has occasionally accepted easement on other non-district-owned parcels. For example, in the past, CRPD has accepted landscaping easements that CRPD maintains on city-owned property in the villages of Zinfandel and in the Anatolia subdivisions. It is important that the easements on the other properties are counted in CRPD's inventory of assets, so as to help make sure that we're quantifying all the different types of land that we're accepting. Park Planning also recommends adding two policy sections that address granting easements to others on CRPD property and accepting easements on other people's property. 1.31, granting easements, and 1.32, accepting easements, helps to clarify this. Because an easement comes with certain responsibilities and restrictions and affects the long-term property asset, the policies require the Board of Directors to grant and accept permanent easements. This has been common... This has been the common unwritten practice since before I arrived 11 years ago. In 2016, the Board approved Resolution 15/16-37 approving an encroachment permit process. And that works most of the time when a partnering agency or a neighbor requires brief access through CRPD property for their own construction project. But occasionally, larger projects, such as the project that is funded with grants or federal funds, requires a grantee to obtain a formal temporary easement from CRPD. For instance, last month, you guys approved the temporary easement for the Chase Drive, the city's Chase Drive Trail project, and that formal agreement was required as part of the grantor's requirements. So sometimes, the encroachment permit, although much simpler to administer, doesn't always So we feel that operations would be more efficient if we distinguished that in most cases, temporary easements for construction should be granted by the general manager because they do not imply long-term impact to the district's land assets. The general manager can decide to bring more controversial temporary easements to the Board for their approval. Park Planning also recommends adding a new policy, 1.33, Quimby Parkland Dedication. That clarifies the intent of Quimby Parkland to support recreation and must meet CRPD standards so that it can be developed for recreational purposes. Oftentimes, we get requests in the initial phases of land use planning to accept land for Quimby Parkland credit that does not qualify as supporting recreation or meeting CRPD standards. The list of the land use categories that are in that proposed policy are... Some of those are land uses that are required by other agencies. So the other agencies will end up requiring them, and then, in fact, the developer is getting to double-dip on counting those different land dedications. But then, they can't be used by... They can't be used for recreational purposes, and so that, you know, makes it so that it really shouldn't be qualifying for Quimby Parkland credit. The other thing that happens is it confuses the jurisdictional responsibilities for ownership, maintenance, and funding. So, for instance, if we accept a trail corridor that is actually a transportation corridor and that falls under the jurisdiction of either the county or the city, there's confusion going forward as to who's going to fund the development and the ongoing maintenance of it. So that... The definition helps us say that we got to be very careful about what it is that we're accepting for Quimby Parkland. So if the policies have been reviewed by CRPD's legal counsel, and they were found to be legally acceptable, and so if you folks have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer.
Phil, Board Members, do you have any other questions to ask? No?
I just have one. So like, if somebody does offer us land, we don't necessarily have to accept it, right?
Absolutely, you don't have to.
Okay. So if we see it as unusable, we don't?
Right. And funding, you know, making sure that there's a funding mechanism for both the development and the maintenance of it is very important as a condition for you guys to want to accept it, right?
Yeah.
Because sometimes a gift is hard to...
Just long as we're not... You know? It's like, oh, this is the part.
Still got to find the money to put it together.
Right.
Yeah.
Williamson. Any other questions? Ready to fill the motion here.
I move the Board of Directors adopt the new policies and proposed amendments to the Park Planning and Development. My second.
A motion by Vice Chair Langen, and I have a second by Secretary Mattis.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Brings us to G4.
Item G4, Adopt the Park Planning and Development Park Naming Policy as Proposed and Provide Direction for Optional Considerations for Section 1.27(c), Criteria for Naming Parks and Park Facilities. At this time, we have no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to Laura Taylor.
Chair Sloan? Thank you.
I need to recuse myself of this item.
Note that Director Danzel is being excused for this item.
Okay.
Yeah. But just... Is he in the discussion of the new policy?
Is he still on it?
Was he? He's... Okay. He's embedded in it, too, according to this policy.
Okay. So staff has proposed some policy amendments and is seeking direction from the Board on the final form of what this policy will take. The revised policy combines previous naming policies 1.27, 1.28, and 1.29 into one policy, 1.27, that will have multiple subdivisions. This policy establishes guidelines for naming and renaming parks and recreational facilities after individuals, ensuring decisions align with community interest and creating a lasting legacy for district park system. It also addresses naming based on community contributions, financial gifts, or land donations. So the key updates and changes are clarifying the role of the Park Naming Ad-Hoc Committee in reviewing and recommending the names of individuals for park naming. A new policy section to formalize the community input process as a structured process for community members to submit names for consideration has been introduced. Submissions must include a comprehensive biography of the individual, three letters of recommendation, a note confirming that all submitted information will be publicly disclosed. And then we're also addressing the timing. The timing... The naming of the new park should be completed before we submit for building permit applications to ensure that the name is included in all the construction documents. And that the renaming restrictions state that it would require Board approval and an allocation of funds to cover all related expenses, including new signage and updates to marketing materials. Staff is also seeking direction from the Board on the following optional considerations for 1.27(c), Criteria for Naming Parks and Park Facilities. Elected officials, including district board members and current district staff members, are not eligible for naming consideration while actively serving. That is one option. Another option is only deceased individuals may be considered for naming honors. And the last option would be the list of individuals approved by the Board on September 20th of 2023 will be retained. So with that, I will turn it over to the Board and look forward to the direction that you'll provide.
Start off with questions. Answer questions from Michael Urich. Director Urich?
Well, thank you, Rick Sloan. Chair Sloan. So, you know, when we did this the other... A couple weeks back, so when we say for... If we do this Amendment 1 for elected officials, that means any elected official, right?
Yeah.
Like city council members, supervisors, Governor Newsom, all... Okay. I missed that because I was going to ask about that, and I just realized, oh, it's there. Okay. I like the new proposals, you know, adding, you know, them coming up with a comprehensive bio, the letters of recommendation, those types of things. With the amendments, I would agree with 1 and 3. 2, I understand there are some concern about, you know, naming a park after a living person because they could, in a sense, go off and do something terrible after the fact, but we have remedy for that. I just think that this Board, before I joined this Board, used to have that as their policy. And Guy Anderson really lobbied heavily, a former Board member, because he wanted to be able to name something for Neil Orchard before...
Right.
So he could know something was named for him. Because, you know, it's an honor to have something named after you, not so much after you're not here to, you know, get that. So that's me. I mean, I... Everything we talked about, everything that's been presented, I agree with. And I agree with Amendments 1 and 3. And that's all I got.
Secretary Mattis.
Thank you, Chair. Can we do this in two parts? Can we vote for 1 and 3? Would that allow Brian to come back in so we can at least have some conversation on this?
It's an action for the whole package.
It's for the whole package?
Yeah. You can't separate it out.
Okay.
Well, we talked...
I mean, I, everything we talked about, everything that's been presented, I agree with. And I agree with amendments one and three. And that's all I got.
Secretary Mattis.
Thank you, Chair. Can we do this in two parts? Can we vote for one and three? Would that allow Brian to come back in so we can at least have some conversation on this?
It's, it's an action for the whole package.
It's for the whole package?
Yeah. You can't separate it out.
Okay.
Well, we've already talked.
Yeah, because these are amendments to the one action.
Okay. I was just thinking, I go, because it's just a bummer that he can't be here. Yeah, I mean, you know, I, same thing. I mean, I would like to see individuals that are still living, you know, have something named, because that way you can at least have a chance to have, you know, a place to bring your family, you know, and your kids and stuff can see it. So that, that's, yeah, that one's kind of tough.
For me. Vice Chair Langen?
Yeah, so is the, when it goes down to the key updates and changes, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, under 1.27, a comprehensive biography of the individual, three letters of recommendation, is that what we currently do, or is that something, is that kind of, in essence, making it more than what we currently? When, when someone submits a name, when that's open, what, I guess my first question is, what do we, what do they have to provide to us in that?
So it's a single-page form right now, and so they don't have to provide the three letters of reference. They don't have to provide a detailed biography, they just have to provide a justification, you know, that can be pretty brief about why that, they think that that individual should be nominated. And one of the things that, that we have to think about is that if we do name a park or facility after somebody, when we're sitting there at the ribbon-cutting ceremony or the renaming, we have to be, have a really good explanation for the community and the citizens as to why that person deserves that honor. And so we felt like it was really important to elaborate, you know, to give us the tools that we need to be able to communicate that better.
And then can you add like a, I mean, something, you know, as far as the three letters, the notes, all this stuff, but also a federal background check? I mean, or just something, you know, in that process?
That is included.
That is included?
Yeah, that was, yeah. Okay. If their name is selected, before their name is selected in the ad hoc committee, it would be activated for us to do that background check before we brought it to the board, so that we didn't get ourselves in a situation.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was the only, I forgot to ask you that today.
Yeah, for sure. That was definitely a needed criteria to ensure that we were picking a name that didn't have any sort of nefarious background or anything like that.
Yeah.
Can I add one other thing real quick, Chair Sloan? We, we went out to other agencies and kind of benchmarked what they were doing.
Okay.
So this is kind of what others are doing. And I was concerned with all of that requirement, that people wouldn't submit names, but I believe they don't have, still don't have a problem with that. And I will even admit, the former, the form we currently use is, is very, very brief and, yeah.
So then if we approve this, all three of these, then Danzel would still have to recuse himself, or because of one?
No. So he would not be eligible to be pulled off the list if he is, if you picked number one as an amendment, then he would be able to stay and vote because he would not be eligible to be considered for a name while he's seated as an elected official.
Yeah.
Unless his name came up for something, that's it.
Well, his name wouldn't be able to come up.
Oh, it wouldn't be able to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm the one who has just that uneasiness with, with the deceased and knowing that there, you know, has been stuff all over the place that does, does happen, but I also understand you can't go off of what-ifs. And that's a, a big what-if situation. And so for me, my big thing was wanting to, at the end of the day, seeing where the other board members stood on it, and then, for me, you know, if that isn't an option, then at least kind of, in essence, beefing up, making it more comprehensive for those others to apply, and so...
So just for a little matter of point, a part of the existing policy would include if someone was alive and you named that, and then after the naming, something happened, we have the rights reserved to remove their name and change that, just so you're aware that there's not, like forevermore, this person will have a name even if there's something that happens.
Yeah.
You can change it on Google like that, like?
Yeah, so I think, you know, hearing, you know, the comprehensive biography, three letters of recommendation, and then the big one to me, which Director Mattis asked was, or Secretary Mattis, sorry, was the, the background check, so.
Okay, well, here's where I am on this. Definitely number one. Definitely not number two, because I agree with everybody, the living have a right to be honored while they're still breathing. The last one, I, as long as we get our board, a full board now, back on track with naming parks until one of us retires, and I don't know if there's anybody else like it, I don't know if Linda Budgge's on that list, because she's...
She is.
So she'd have to be also...
She would have to wait till she was...
Wait till she's out of, out of public, out of public eye, well, not public eye, but out of service and all that, elected official. So I totally agree with that, and I think that there's things that we still would, even though you're gonna get a bio of these people now, that bio could also change, can be added to, and, and things could happen, you never know, right? But you always have Shelley ride it, and it just makes it sound like you're so, you're like, so important, you know? So I'm, I'm, I'm shooting for one and three, on the same thing. As long as we get Brian back.
Well, we gotta vote first.
So will someone want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll move the Board of Directors adopt the park planning and development, park naming policy as proposed with the amendments to include amendment one, elected officials including district board members and district, current district staff members are not eligible for naming consideration while actively serving, and also amendment number three, the list of individuals approved by the board on September 20th, 2023 will be retained.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood.
I'll second.
I have a second by Secretary Mattis. We'll call it.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Bring Brian back.
Bring him back.
Thank you.
Secret. I know. Okay, thank you.
Welcome back to discussions.
Thank you. Now we're ready for item H, Board of Directors' item.
Item H1, there is no report. Item H2A is the training report, which included AB 1234 Ethics and AB 1825, AB 1661, Sexual Harassment Prevention. Item H2B is the community activities report. It is noted there's a clerical error under Chairperson Sloan's report, it should read a membership committee on March 4th and Rancho Corte de la Little League on March 8th. At this time, we received no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who wants to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So am I reporting out now?
Yes.
AB 1234. I got the memo saying that we have to at least do two hours. I doubled that. I did four hours on this thing.
Super ethical.
I had to read it like four or five times. It was, to me, reading is not my forte, I like to hear things, so the sexual harassment, you've got to listen to watch and hear. The reading part, it's written by a lawyer, you can tell that, and it was, it was kind of tricky to read. Things were designed to, you know, basically, I think the best thing to do is, you know, the perception idea, anything that can be perceived, possible wrong, even though you're not in the wrong, always lean towards that perception thing. And that's what I take out of it. But I don't look forward to doing it again, unless we can find a better way of doing it. Maybe have some, go to a, go to a conference and have it, and they have slides and talk about it, or maybe, or have someone read it to me. Is that possible? No, out loud?
There's software that probably would read it to you.
I can get tapes.
Why is he looking at Danny?
There's probably software.
I should've got tapes, because I think I...
Trust me, if you needed like an ADA accommodation.
I do, an IEP, I need that kind of thing of reading. I've got ADD, I wander.
So next.
Okay, next is Yearwood on sexual harassment.
Yeah, I completed unfortunately right after the board packet went through last month, so I completed the required harassment prevention training on February 17th. I am fortunate, like I believe Secretary Mattis is, we get to do these twice with our, I don't know if you, do you have to do it at the state?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I have to do it at the state as well, or the, with the regional transit, so...
Three hours long.
Yeah, so it's always, you know, it's important to get a refresher and keep up on it and be current with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Be community activity reports. Mr. Albert, Brian?
Thanks, Chair Sloan. CRPD Conference, March, Conference Committee, March 4th. We trying to finalize, you know, who's gonna be where sponsorship dollars this year are up, attendance is up by a few, early registration has closed, there's, at the time of this report, there was 52 attendees from 21 districts, which was a little bit higher than last year. Our total sponsorship dollars this year, at the, at the time the conference committee met, it was 77,500, which is higher than the 57,000 for the year before, so that was great. Lots of sponsors, everybody seems to be getting, getting all their information that they need, and we did talk about our 2026 venue date, but I'll talk about that in a little bit, in my, one of my other reports that I have to make. So that's it on the conference committee. Then on the sixth, CRPD Legislative Committee, what a fun committee that is. I love legislation, I hear more things than, I have to listen to it two or three times just to understand on that, just because there's so much going on. And that'll go into my CRPD Capitol visit here in a minute, but on March 11th, I had CRPD Board Meeting, which we went over our Capitol visit, which was the next day, we had, we met with a couple different legislators, myself and Chair Sloan, we went in different directions that day, just to talk about what was going on. We did get ready to talk about the 2026 conference, something that, as the current president of that organization, I pushed to make sure that we know at this conference where the 2026 is gonna be, instead of waiting until January, because some of the districts aren't as financially sound as we are, so they have to really budget out that extra time and giving them six months to, less than six months to budget for a conference doesn't work, so I felt that it was great there. 2026 conference, as of right now, the location's been set as Monterey, so the hotel has not been set yet because the hotel that was picked was too far out of town, so we're trying to get a little closer in, into town, because there are wives that come and they want to do things and I'd have to drive a half hour to get, get someplace. That's it on that, and then March 12th was our Capitol visit. We did talk about some legislation that's going on, some scary legislation when it comes to parks. There's legislation to get rid of Quimby, which is how we get our parks, as we just voted on earlier tonight. So there's legislation to try and reduce fees, and within reducing fees, they felt Quimby falls under that, which it's technically not, but some legislators feel that it is a, a fee, so they want to get rid of all fees to housing so that they can drop housing prices. So that was very interesting. So I got a chance to talk to a couple legislators about that, and just, you know, let them know, I talked to one career who was a Southern member for down south, he was very interested in it, and he actually spoke to us about Hospira, they get $60 a household to, to keep their parks going. That's what, what they're at. So he was very shocked to hear that, that number. And Southern Cal, some of those places, they're, they're written so long ago, they're not getting a lot of money, but they've got 100,000, 200,000 homes, so they make up the money that way. But yeah, so just different, different things there. Then we did talk to the Chairperson Diane Papin, who is the Assembly's Water, Parks, and Wildlife Committee Chair, and just talk, reminder of what CRPD does and what the districts throughout the state do. When she was a city councilwoman, her focus was on parks, even as a city, and now she has moved on to the Assembly, and she really still believes in parks, and she currently visits her parks every chance she gets to go back home to Southern Cal and see what's going on and try and figure out how to get us more money, in a sense, so that's it, my report.
Great, thank you, Brian. Director Yearwood?
Well, my two items I've actually already reported out on, so there's nothing else to really add...
Okay.
...in various portions of this meeting, so...
How was your weekend?
It was wonderful. It was my wedding anniversary, thanks for asking.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I heard the "aw."
All right, Secretary Mattis?
I'll set a timer to keep it short. Ah, there's nothing to report.
Took you so long to say that?
Vice Chair Langen?
Yeah, so one of them I already reported out on, and so the next one, March 8th, Rosemont Little League Opening Day, I was wondering why yours was on there, because I didn't see you when the parade, but, you know, it's all right. Yeah, so just, just a great afternoon. I took on the responsibility of coaching two teams, and so I am busy, very busy, and so, yeah, but I love it. It's honestly one of my favorite times of the year is to go watch, you know, the youth play baseball. And so, yeah, just, it, it was a great day, the parks looked great, and so, yeah, it was awesome time.
How do you, how do you coach two teams?
Patiently.
How do you, how do you be?
Well, well, one of them, one of them's T-ball.
I'll say, will they ever have an opportunity to play each other, so they're different age groups?
Oh, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. And when one practices on the days that the other ones don't, and it all works somehow, I don't know.
Somehow, well, that's fantastic. So now let's get to me, because I've got a long list here. On February 13th, Public Service Ethics, I did that already. California Association Recreation Park District, it was the membership meeting, we met via Zoom, and on that, on that agenda was to come up with, that committee is designed to beef up our membership, of course, hence the name, but one of the things that was on that agenda was looking into this, you know, there's a new association called the American Association of Special Districts, the AASD, and they were, they contacted us, asking if we wanted to be a founding member of their new organization, and in our board meeting, we discussed it, and the thought of having, taking our organization, which is a California-based organization, and giving it visibility in the nation, sort of was intriguing to our, our board members. And they do offer a few other things that might, might pan out, we're gonna keep an eye on the, how we, you know, are using it, and our member, district members would also be able to use it, so it'll be a plug for becoming a member of CRPD. Let's see, on that same day, we talked about our new members, we're working on member directory, membership directory, so it'll have people's names of the, who's the, who's the GM, who's the finance, all these people listed on, the important people of each district, the board members, and so, and then the other thing was to, we also, a new park district has become a member of CRPD, and it's Riverside County, which we were excited to hear. Let's see, now that takes us, the Rancho Corte Athletic Association meeting was, was really nice, because we had two representatives from CRPD, Laura and Chase, putting, answering questions about our optimized plan from the members of the Rancho Corte Athletic Association. And they were pretty, they were great answering the questions and, and not letting it sort of get, drift off into an area that, that's not, you didn't, that wasn't on the list, kind of a thing, so I really want to thank them for coming to the, to the evening for that and, and doing what they did, and they had on slides, you could see the, what the questions were, and it was very nice, I'd thank them again. Rose, not the Rosemont, the Rancho Corte Little League, I, I came out there and took photographs again, and the park, the field looked really nice. It was a nice event, they did it differently this year, they didn't have games on day one, they, they had a hit-a-thon, and they raised a lot of money with this hit-a-thon. One kid raised 1,800 dollars, like a little six-year-old, 1,800 dollars and got a, won a PS... a little six-year-old, eighteen hundred dollars and got a, won a PS5. And the team, a team, the White Sox, I think that either the minor league White Sox, they, they raised twenty-four hundred dollars or twenty-eight hundred dollars, and they got a pizza party. And then, but the whole thing, they, they raised like twenty-four thousand dollars for the league. They go towards scholarships and, and equipment and upkeep. So that was kind of nice. And they had this long drive kind of contest off a tee. And for each division, people, the kids who signed up, so.
Does that get rid of the volunteer requirements?
I don't know that. I really don't know. I don't know if they still have the volunteer requirements.
Oh, I doubt that.
The snack bar stuff? Nope, they used to have it. Or they just, you know, they, they throw it into your fee. And if you want to work it off, you can work it off. The next thing is CRPD Board Meeting. Brian mentioned a lot of the stuff we did there. I don't think we need to rehash that. I will talk about the, some of the legislative items that we're focusing on. I'll just mention the ones that we are supporting, in support of, and also watching. One is AB 259 Rubio, that's the open meeting, local agencies, teleconferences bill. And the SB 239, Arva Quinn is the Senator for that. And that's for the open meeting, that's also for open meeting teleconferences. We're all, we're keeping our eye on those two bills and, in supportive. And we're watching the SB 315, which is Grayson's, that's the Quimby Act one. So you guys want to keep an eye on that one. We do not want to lose that Quimby Act. It's, it was the main topic of our visit to the Capitol, talking to all the legislators and the people, the policymakers. And I think I'll go right into, into that. Oh, Gavin Nusens, the budget, we actually are three hundred and sixty-three million, I think, positive balance in our budget, which is the first time in a couple of years. Maybe we'll, right? But Brian and I, we were, we went in separate directions at the Capitol. And on my first ten o'clock appointment, we were talking, we were talking to the Assembly Budget Committee, which was, you know, talking about the all sorts of stuff, you know, basically coming up with the Quimby thing. And then we talked, and then we talked to the California State Parks Office of Grants and Local Services. And we talked to the Senate Local Government Committee. And we all were in the same room with the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee, which is, seems to be some issues about our water supply down in Southern California. But that takes us to the 25th Annual Rancher Cordova Volunteer Award Celebration. And I was excited, because winning the distinguished community service organization was, it takes a Lincoln Village, which I thought was really wonderful, that they were able, they were being honored out there. And a lot of good people, I don't know if you, you know, Kevin Sims, the bandleader, was honored for being the volunteer Rancher Cordovan of the Year. But it was a nice event also at City Hall. And on the 15th, I attended, at Hagan Park, for the first time there, the Holy Festival. I don't know if you know about the Holy Festival. It's the ushering, saying goodbye to winter and saying hello to spring. And it's the Hindu people, they, they, they throw colored chalk at people and they become very colorful. And I take photographs and I, I'm just immersed myself in there, trying to keep my camera clean. But I, I totally get it and I love it. And I posted some on social media. And you can check those pictures out. But it was nice. It was, it was in an area that required very little cleanup. I know that much. If any, you know, just some trash maybe that was left aside. But it was on, basically on the grass, grass area. And that, the stuff just soaks right down into it. It's just cornstarch, colored cornstarch. But that's it. I'm done. That's a lot. So that takes us to, where are we? Uh, tr- Hi. Hi. Comments by staff on non-genue items?
Item I-1, District Wide Monthly Progress Support for March 2025. At this time, we have received no speaker cards. However, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comments. So I'll turn it over to General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you, Clark Golden. Okay, just some highlights from the past month. I want to thank the staff for putting together a very comprehensive policy that the board saw this evening. So thank you for all of that work. I know there was a heavy lift there. It always is at the beginning of our fifth, our calendar year. So thank you to the staff for staying on those policies. You did a great job. We attended the California Parks and Recreation Society's District Two Awards and Installation Banquet. Congratulations to Nina Seiner, who will be leading District Two as the President. Heather Shelsky will be leading the Aging Section. And Nicole Lowery will be representing as the Treasurer. Mark Haig, who is our CRPD Park Services Supervisor Two, received the prestigious Jerry Fox Maintenance Management School Scholarship for 2025. And then Exploration Park received its first award, maybe of many, for the Facility Design and Park Planning Award for the year. So we're off to a great start with Exploration Park. And congratulations to Mark and Way to Lead for a lot of our staff that are representing in the District Two region, which is a very large region of California that's represented. It goes all the way to Redding, all the way up to Lake Tahoe, and then down close to San Francisco. So we're very well leading the, the region, as well as, you know, having great involvement and support for our industry. So thank you to the staff for that. We had our first of the year, all staff wellness luncheon and shared the year in review. And then staff received an overview of a training in CPR and AED. We again introduced the FISH Customer Service Program and activated the FISH Dex Committee. So I want to thank them for putting that together, and especially Andrea White, who led that and implemented a fantastic luncheon for the staff. At that luncheon, we also had staff donate eight hundred and sixty-six non-perishable food items. And we delivered those items the following week to the Rancher Cordova Food Locker. And that is a record, I believe, that we set. So congrats to the staff. And we just love our sister agency at the Food Locker. And they were super appreciative of all of that donation. So it's not just during the holiday season that they need these foods. So we're going to continue to reach out to them. They're giving us a specific list of types of food that are the most popular. And we'll continue to share our wealth with them as we move forward throughout the year. I have the honor of also serving lunch at the St. Patrick's Day Celebration at the Neil Orchard Activity Center. And thank you to Board of Supervisors Pat Hume, who sponsored the event. The revenue for the month, total operational revenue available is ten million and seven hundred thousand, or forty-four percent of the annual budget. So we're spot on target for this time this year. Recreation revenue is slightly below target, but is ahead of the previous two years, and is expected to be on mark with incoming spring and early summer revenue. Of the forty-nine projects in the CIP, we have forty-nine projects in progress, twenty-one have been completed, while eight projects are actively being worked on. This represents an increase of three completed and five activated since last month. Our Human Resources Team attended a legal training to provide practical guidance for the implementation of new executive orders, as presented by the Shaw Law Group. So those are happening weekly. And so we're wanting to stay on top of these things, so that if it affects us as a special district, we're prepared to pivot as needed. Thank you to the HR team for staying on top of that. We have some changes in the ribbon cutting plan. We originally had Exploration Park and Rock Rose Park be scheduled tentatively for April 19th. We are going to be looking to actually have that in June, due to our heavy schedule in the spring. And Shelby will be sending out some options for dates to the board very soon. Also, in our Grants Department, we had two grants that we applied for. The Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership, ORLP, grant for the Dave Roberts Community Park Revitalization Program. The request is for three million, three hundred and ninety thousand. It's a matching grant. And so that was submitted in March. And it's a competitive pre-application with the state, state for a federal grant. The proposed project would add substantial park improvements to the Dave Roberts Community Park. So we're crossing our fingers. As we all know, federal grants may be, you know, a little bit challenging. But we have a great proposal. So we're, we're going to keep our optimism and hope alive. We also applied for a NEPA Brownfields Grant. This is a grant for three hundred and sixteen thousand. The grant was submitted back in November of 2024. This is for the Center Property Community Park Redevelopment Environmental Revitalization Project. It is a competitive grant to find the feasibility, to fund the feasibility study Phase One and Phase Two Environmental Assessment, and for the Center Property Project. So we're still waiting on that one. We are looking for any opportunity to find funding to help clean up the lead exposure that was done, as it being a shooting center for years prior. The Rosemont Community Poll Project, CRPD staff attended an information session on the, on the Rosemont Community Polls Project Phase Two, hosted by the Rosemont Community Foundation on March 5th. The Polls Project Phase Two will add community polls to the southern wing of the Butterfly Garden at Rosemont Community Park. And we're looking forward to getting that going. I believe they had several community agencies interested in doing a poll this year. So I'm sure Kathy G., who is one of our community residents out there, who's championing that, will be in touch and will move forward with that when we can. The past month in golf is going to be reported by Jill. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
I mean, you're only welcome to do the report if you'd like to.
No, it's okay. No, I insist. So I'd like to introduce Jill Nuns, our Recreation Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm tongue-tied today.
It's all good. I understand.
Go for it. And the golf I heard was doing good. So if you want to take it from there.
Yeah, I mean, the golf course is doing very well. Of course, February was a really great month, because it didn't rain a lot. But here, here we are in March, where it's raining a lot. So you know, the golf course is gonna, gonna do this for a little while, until we get that sunny, sunny weather every single day. But they're doing a great job keeping the golf course in a great condition. We are excited, though, to have another PGA instructor out of the golf course. That's really big for us, to be able to have those instructors out of the golf course, teaching everyone, but especially our youth, to play golf. Because what does that do? If the youth get involved, then they're going to come back and play at our golf course over and over again. So Patrick Harris is going to be the new PGA professional out there. Super excited for him to start and get some more lessons out at the golf course. Park Services have, has, has had a really busy month. If you've read over each one of those bullet points, there are a lot of projects going on right now in Park Services. It's a great time of year to do it, before all the green grass and the weeds and everything come up from the rain. So like Secretary Mattis had mentioned, at the last board meeting, we have put out the new concrete three-bin trash receptacles at Prospect Hill Park, at White Rock Community Park, Cavala Ranch Park, and another one at Hagan Community Park, since that's such a great, such a big park. So happy to have those three bin systems. Each year, we put four of those bin systems into our budget, so that we hope in the future, every single one of our parks, whether it's a community park, which they all have now, all the community parks do have the three bin systems. Now we're going to move into those neighborhood parks. So thanks for staff for doing that. Lincoln Village Community Pool, the staff was able to actually finally replace that old flooring that was out there in the lifeguard room slash attendance room. And it's a huge difference. So you can see that it looks better, but it's also safer for our lifeguard staff in the summer at Lincoln Village Community Pool. At the White Rock Community Park, the aquatics team has restained the deck of the splash pad in preparation for the upcoming aquatic season. And it seems like, why do we repaint something that, you know, kids are just playing on with water. But if you go out there, it's amazing to see how that new color just pops, even through the water. And so I'm, I'm really appreciative of the staff taking care of the assets that we have out in our park system. In recreation, of course, they had another fun-filled, exciting month, as you can read, the Teen Adventure Group. I really want to do this. I need to be a part of this tag adventure group. They went on another exciting trip up to Santa Rosa. And then on, around the Fourth of July, the Hagan Community Barn hosted their first Valentine's Party. They had over twenty-nine participants. And I'm telling you, what a creative idea that Chris had for these Valentine Days car, like, it was incredible. Like Chase came into my office and showed me, and I was like, wow, this is what it's all about. So super proud of that team for, for pulling together a Valentine's Party at the barn. Aquatics, super, super proud of Colin for getting a really tough certification to become a lifeguard instructor trainer. It's, it really is a very difficult certification. And so now we have two. So we celebrated Nicole, now we're celebrating Colin. And this is just going to open up avenues for our staff, as well as for additional trainings, for just the region, not even just for Cordova staff. So again, we're able to be able to bring that training to Cordova. And what is that going to do? It's going to get us more qualified, more certified lifeguards that we're going to be able to continue to have at our service in the future, as well as for the region, which the region needs as well. So super proud of that aquatics staff for doing that, and Colin. Okay, with that, I'm going to go on to the special event invitation. So as you know, if you've probably already started to hear, the California Capitol Air Show hosted a little bit earlier this year. It's going to be this Saturday and Sunday. We have the Tag Cleanup, Creek Cleanup at Hagan Community Park on Saturday, March 22nd, from 10:00 AM to noon. And then an added event that's not listed on your invitation page, is we have the second and final Public Outreach Community Meeting for the White Rock Community Dog Park on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 PM. And that's going to be at the White Rock Community Clubhouse. So that's April 8th at 5:30. Patrick already mentioned the ribbon cuttings got canceled and it's postponed. We'll get back to you on a date sometime, hopefully in June, is when we're thinking about hosting those new ribbon cuttings. Kids' Day in the Park, big day, hosted by the Cordova Community Council at Hagan Community Park on Saturday, April 26th, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. Then we have Earth Day Celebration and Arbor Day, hosted by the Rosemont Community Association and CRPD. That's going to be at the Rosemont Community Park on Saturday, April 26th, 9:30 is going to be the Arbor Day Celebration. So hopefully you guys all can be there for that. We're going to do a tree planting with the Rosemont Community Association Foundation. And then at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Rosemont Community Association Foundation is going to have an Earth Day Celebration. And then we have a Senior Resource Fair at Lincoln Village Community Park on Saturday, April 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jill. What a nice report. What does that bring us? Does it bring us to closed session?
Item J.
No, Item J. Item what?
Item J-1 is our, yep, Articles, Correspondence, and Public Outreach. This month, we have one article and two newsletters. Item J-2 is our CRPD Calendar for March and April. And at this time, we receive no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comment.
Thank you. So that takes us to K, closed session.
Item K-1, Liability Claim Pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9. Claimant Del Raj Mohal, agency claimed against Cordova Recreation and Park District. And at this time, we receive no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comment.
So I'm going to end this meeting.
Adjourned.
Adjourned at 7:50.
Adjourned to closed session.
To closed session at 7:58 PM.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.